Hi, everybody, and welcome to Wednesday night's Town Hall meeting. And I provide these for parents of students on IEPs to give you the latest updates on what's going on with distance learning and what's going on and how you can prepare your child to have an equitable IEP for next school year, whether we are in distance learning or not. So that's what the Town Halls are for. So we're gonna get started. I know people will start, keep coming on, but I want to give you, I want to get started because I want to start just, you know, being on time and starting right at 5 o'clock. So, and, and you guys, I always post the replay on my Advocates for Angels Facebook page and also in the Special Education Parent Empowerment Network group page. So if you're a parent of a child and I, and IEP, please go to that group page and join. It's a private page just for parents on students on IEPs where I give you more in-depth information and you have better access to me and asking me questions and getting more information. So, so districts, I don't think they can make up their minds. So in Corona Norco Unified, last week, they said they weren't opening for the, at least the first four weeks of the new semester. However, yesterday, they had an emergency school board meeting on Tuesday night because they had received so many complaints from parents of students on IEPs that they had another school board meeting and they negotiated with the union because the union wanted to keep the district closed at the beginning of the new year based on how much it was going to cost them to reopen and adhere to the CDC regulations and guidelines. So at the school board meeting, they came to an agreement with the union, the teachers' union there, and they decided they are going to reopen in the fall now. So now we're reopening. So, you know, and I, and I kind of take, you know, well, when one district does something like this, I'm sure other districts might be doing something similar, even though districts can do whatever they want. But that gives me an indication that it looks like districts are now considering and making the decision to reopen under the guidelines of the CDC. I also know it has to do with every county and the county's guidelines coming from the CDC. But you can pretty much bet if there's, if your sister districts, that the CDC is going to be giving the same guidelines to every district, right? Now, this is in California. So I know a lot of parents are listening to me in different states across the nation. So you got to find out what's going on in your state. What are the CDC guidelines, CDC guidelines in your state? And, you know, I think it all depends on the numbers of the virus and, 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 and also it depends on the union, the teachers' union in that particular district as well because they, depending on how the teachers feel, if the teachers don't feel comfortable opening up and exposing themselves to the virus, which a lot, I know a lot of teachers don't feel comfortable doing that. There, I know they're lobbying to not have the schools open. So that's the latest update here locally in Corona Norco. I'm going to open it up and I'm going to ask you guys what's happening or if you know what's happening in your district in a few, in a few minutes. But I just wanted to give you that update for, in terms of Corona Norco Unified School District. And, because a lot of my parents that follow me are in that district or Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange County area. So now, I want to read you what came down from the message from the superintendent of Corona Norco Unified just this morning. And he said that the direction to develop and implement a plan for full physical attendance in August was reached last evening. Additionally, the board consensus expressed a desire to clarify instructional time. So how are teachers going to get online and teach your child virtually? So instructional time. They're going to develop guidelines for that. They're going to develop specific parameters for special education instruction as well as general education instruction and the consideration of multiple learning management systems for remote learning at the year-round schools. The physical return timeline parameters provided by the board are as follows. Year-round schools, full physical return August 3rd, according to their calendar, and the traditional schools' full physical return is on August 11th. Now, for parents who don't feel comfortable sending their child back to school, because I know I've talked to a lot of parents and they've asked me, if they open, I don't want to send my kid back to school, but I still want my IEP. So do we have the right to ask for that? And you absolutely do. And so they differentiated that for those parents by saying, please note, the district is developing an option for a virtual learning environment as space permits. So as space permits, parents, that's a key, you know, what does that mean? For families electing not to return to the traditional school setting at any time. If, at any time, if families choose to return to the physical schooling, students will be welcomed back to his or her home school or school of choice via the intra-district process. So you do have the right to remain in, at home, not go back to the physical brick and mortar building and continue to receive distance learning, if that's what you choose to do. But you, that gives me an indication when they say if space permits, that's like a red flag. So if you guys know you want to do that and you're, you know, your district is reopening, you better get your letter in right away saying, I want virtual schooling, so put me on the list now. Because they probably only have a limited amount of teachers teaching that way or something. I'm not sure, because how are they going to? If a teacher's teaching during the day, every day virtually, how, I mean, in school, how are they going to teach virtually, right? Now, there's, people have had lots of good ideas, like, well, why don't they just put a camera in their room? And then they, they stream it virtually to the kids that are at home. I mean, that makes the most sense, but I don't know. You, school districts make crazy decisions. So they, they don't want to make the easy decision, right? So, but, but that's a red flag to me where it says, if, if space permits for virtual schooling. So I would make your request as soon as possible if that's something you really want to do. Now, the other big tip of the day that I want to give you guys advice now that we know this is that, you know, the early bird gets the worm. You guys can write this letter now, making your request to make sure that whether you get distance learning or whether you go back to school, you, because, listen, guys, they are telling us that this is going to happen again. They, they pretty much have predicted it's going to reemerge and we're going to have another outbreak sometime in the near future. They think it's going to be sometime in flu season, around October or November. And who's to say that this is never going to happen again? Because it happened once, so most likely. I mean, God forbid, you know, hopefully it's not. But we need to be prepared and you need to know that you don't want what to hap, what happened in March, April and May to happen again. So even if you go back to school, you want to make sure that these things are in place and especially if you're going to remain in virtual schooling. So, number one is every student should have received a digital device. So if your child didn't receive a device from your school district, that's the, that was what was mandated by Betsy DeVos, the Secretary, Congress Secretary of Education. Every kid was supposed to get a device. So if your child didn't get a device, you need to get your child a device. Number two, that universal technology training be made available for parents and required for teachers. So if you don't understand how to access technology, how to get on Google Classroom or Zoom or whatever platform, they are providing remote learning, because that was a big problem. You can ask for parent training for technology and say, hey, I couldn't even access, when they did provide something online, I couldn't figure it out. Because they trained the teachers, but they didn't train the parents. So, parents, you have the right to ask for parent training on technology. Number three, if you don't have a Wi-Fi hotspot or Wi-Fi access, that's the other thing that goes with your device. If you have a device and you can't get online because you have a problem with Wi-Fi or you don't have Wi-Fi or whatever, they are supposed to make sure you have Wi-Fi so you can get your kid on distance learning. The, the districts are supposed to provide that for you if you don't have Wi-Fi. So device and Wi-Fi. They were, they gave billions of dollars to all the districts across the nation to make sure kids had a device and that, that every home had Wi-Fi access. Okay, so that's the device and Wi-Fi. Then the next section is instruction. So how is your child going to receive instruction in distance learning? Because it was a mess last March, April and May, and they better fix it when new, when the schools reopen. So, instruction. So they need to offer consistent live online instruction. Every teacher needs to get online and teach a class online just as if your child was going to school. They're in math class. They should be getting math class online. Language arts. The language arts teacher should be coming online and giving language arts. So they should be figuring out a schedule for every student just as like they have their schedule during the school year, their virtual schedule, and, and the teachers come on at a certain time and teach their class. And that's how they should be doing it, because that's education. Education isn't throwing a bunch of websites at parents and telling parents to teach their kids these different links and websites and ideas. That's not an education. That's not implementing the IEP. So you need to say, you know, I want my teachers to get online and give instruction and teach classes for my child. So, and another option would be that they could also offer live online classes that make sure, when they do the live, that they're recorded. So if, if a student for some reason can't make that at that time or you're working or there's a reason why your child can't get online and listen to that class that was taught, that they have a recording that they can send to you. Here's the recording for yesterday's math lesson. So they need to record these live sessions of instruction. Number three, they need to mandate a consistent school-wide schedule without overlapping classes that conflict with each other. And, and so that means that last March, April, May, this was a problem because sometimes teachers would be getting online, but then they would have another class that that kid had at the same time because they didn't have the schedule worked out properly. So they have to make sure that, that, that when you have a math class, your language arts class isn't being taught at the same time. That's the district's responsibility. So they need to, to mandate a consistent schedule without overlapping the classes and having conflicts. And, and also, they need to offer a time, you know, a lot of times, like in junior high and high school, they have what's called office hours where kids can access the teacher to ask questions if they have questions about a, a assignment or a project coming up or whatever it may be, that they have access to the teacher. So they need to set up some way to offer a daily live contact with teachers and students. Okay, so that's the instruction piece. And then progress monitoring. So they had no progress monitoring in March, April and May, you guys. So how the heck did they figure out if your child made progress on their goals? If your child made progress on anything? Because they didn't have progress monitoring in any way, shape or form. And they just said, grades will remain the same, but it, but they can raise if, I don't know what the if even was, because the if what? They didn't teach consistently. They didn't give academic instruction and they didn't, you know, work on goals. So I don't know how kids raised their grade, but supposedly some kids could raise their grade according to that teacher, if that teacher deemed that grade was raised. I don't know how, because there was no progress monitoring. They weren't keeping grades. So anyway, this year, they need to change that and they need to make sure that children are receiving grades and feedback on their assignments. So their, their assignments are getting graded and they're getting feedback from the teachers just as if we were in school. So everything should be just as if we were in school. Only now it's virtual. And they need to receive assessments to measure the academic progress and inform academic placement during online learning. So again, this is what they do during the regular school year. They, they give assessments. The teachers give informal assessments to find out where every kid is. Are they progressing toward their goals? When you have your annual IEP, teachers do informal quizzes or informal tests so that they can come to your IEP and say, okay, here's the present levels of your child's performance. And they did that by looking at your child's grades, tests, quizzes. And they might have done an informal quiz or test just to give you that updated information on your goals for your child in determining the new goals and where your child is currently on present levels of performance. So if you have a annual coming up, then you must, you know, make sure that they are doing progress monitoring and doing assessments during the next school year, if they, you know, in distance learning. And, and let me give a piggyback on that. If you have an annual, say, at the beginning of the school year, they can't just tell you, well, we, we don't have, we're going to take the, the present levels of performance based off of March 17th or whatever it was, March 13th, I think it was, when schools closed. We're going to, we're going to take the present levels from March 13th because nobody was taking progress monitoring during those last four months of school. No, because your child today has regressed because they didn't get four months of schooling. So they have to figure out how to give a current present level of performance as of the day of your annual. If you guys have questions on this, write, write it down because you can ask me as I'm moving along. You might have questions on what I'm saying. Okay, so that's the reading, receiving grades, receiving assessments. And they should also be surveying parents bi-weekly at the school site level to see what is working and what is not working. Because during the last closed school closure, they weren't asking parents, is this working or not working? What's going on? Teachers would, would check in with you and go, hey, how's it going? What are you doing? You know, are you, are you well? Are you doing okay? They didn't ask, you know, is this working, mom? You know, what do you need? What needs to be changed? They didn't do that. So this time, they better be doing that. They better been checking in with parents to see if the distance learning is working and what parents need to make it successful. Because that's the only way they're going to make it equitable, right? They're going to, they're going to fix this problem on all the problems that they had last year so that if they don't have those problems this year, it's by communicating with parents and having parents have a say and speaking their voice. Okay, so now we're going to go to parent rights. So this is about how schools will reopen. So you guys have a say-so and how schools are going to reopen. So they should immediately develop a plan to include parent input and give parents a seat at the table during decision-making about how schools reopen in the fall, including the parameters for the hybrid distance learning plans. So you guys have a voice. You can say, you know, I don't think this should happen or I do think this should happen. You know, a lot, a lot of parents are concerned about how are they going to do this? Is my, what if my kid can't wear a mask all day long because they have sensory integration disorder? Or my kid's ADHD, they're going to just rip their mask off their face? You know, there's lots of concerns parents have about going back to school. And you have a right, as an equal IEP team participant as the parent, to have your, these concerns heard and have them addressed. Okay? And then this is the kicker. This is the big, big, biggest one out of all these tips, you guys. So, so many parents have said to me, I work, Valerie, and either whether if you work from home now or if you're, if you go and you leave going to work, how could you have your child stay home in distance learning? The, because I've had moms say, I, I'm going to have to take time off until this stops or I'm going to have to quit my job and be home because my kid can't possibly get online and do this independently. I have to sit next to them the whole time and make sure they're accessing the curriculum, listening and, and starting tasks and completing the task, whatever they're supposed to be doing. So that's a big problem. So they are, lots of parents are provide, are demanding that they provide federal and state stimulus for parents to cover the homeschool children costs for childcare. The childcare costs or lost pay while children are learning at home. So you guys have that right to ask your local school district to cover the home childcare, if you have to have childcare come in because you and your husband work or pay for your, your, reimburse you for your lost pay if you don't go to work and you don't get a paycheck. You have that right. Just so you know. Okay? And so that, that's my, you know, recommendations of what to start working on right now. Start, you know, drafting your letter. And again, I just want to remind you guys that all of these things that I'm reviewing with you in the Town Halls, I can't teach you in depth. I can't help you write your letter in a Town Hall. I can give you the information. That's why I developed the membership, the Parent Brigade Membership. That is a monthly membership where I actually go into these things in depth. I help parents write their letters according to their specific situation, their specific school district or state. And I help you know what to say, how to say it, how to follow up and how to make sure your voice is heard. So these things are followed through on and what to do. And that's the parent membership. It's all over my Facebook page. The link to join is there. The first month is only $25 because then you can see what it's like. And if you like it, then you stay in. And, and it's, it's, I offered it because we're in such need right now in this time and there's so many parents who need help. So that's the Parent Brigade. So now I'm going to open it up for questions for any parents who have questions on any of those things. So I gave you a lot of information.
Hi, I'm Farah.
Hi, Farah. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I missed the like first, I think, two minutes. So you were saying to write a letter. Is it pertaining to the list that you just discussed?
Yes, yes. So, you know, if you, you can either write a letter now and make these requests or if you have an IEP meeting you know is coming up within the first three to four weeks of school, you could ask for these things there. But, you know, if you write the letter now, those requests will be in and you're, you're kind of, you're, you're doing it in a more expedient manner because they don't have to answer you now because schools are closed, unless you, unless you have summer school open. But the, the timeline usually begins at the first day of school. So when you make a request, the district has to respond to your request within 15 days with a prior written notice. So if you write it now, the timeline would begin the first day of school. Then within 15 days, they have to respond to you. So that might be a quicker way rather than waiting for an annual to ask for.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we just got done with our annual, so.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Didn't you already sign it?
Yeah, we're going to due process.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, second due process. I'm in only in preschool and I just finished my first due process in November.
Uh huh. Okay. Well, then, I would definitely ask your attorney to add in these things that you want to request.
Yeah.
Since you're going to due process, those could just become other dispute issues.
Yeah, absolutely. What a disaster. Thank you so much. I'm going to join the membership, so that sounds great.
Oh, good. Yeah, you'll learn a lot. You'll learn a lot. Because I can, I can help you so much more because then I have time with you.
Yeah, oh, yes, absolutely. And that's what we all, all of us parents need.
Yes, yes. I know.
Autism.
Yes, oh, that's awesome. So.
Valerie, is there any attorney that you can recommend?
Um, yeah, I have, the attorney that I have been working with for many years is Mark Woodsmall. He's located in Pasadena. But also, Tim Adams is an also really amazing attorney. He is in Orange County. I believe it's either Huntington or Newport Beach, somewhere out there in Orange County. But one of my clients that went to do hearing is working with Tim Adams right now. I referred that case over to Tim because they need to go to hearing. I do not go to hearing. I'm not an attorney. I don't like hearings because I'm not an attorney. Attorneys love hearings. I don't like hearings. I help parents outside of a hearing process. So, and, you know, 99% of my cases were successful in getting what the child needs through the IP process. But sometimes you got to go to hearing. So I will refer my parents to either Mark Woodsmall or Tim Adams.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Barbara's also in the, the parent membership. And we're going to be starting tomorrow night's, the first call, Barbara. So you did, you got the, the email?
Oh, my God, I have been so busy transcribing my life away for all these IEP meetings.
Oh, you're having an IEP meeting?
No, 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 I already had it, but.
Okay.
My attorney needs a transcription of all the, all the IEP meetings. So I'm transcribing them. But I guess you need them for due process or whatever.
So transcribing them off of the recordings?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, that's a gigantic job. I think they have an app of some kind that will do that for you.
Yeah, but then you have to like actually go back, listen to what the app, make sure it's the correct person that is, is, say, it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, because sometimes it doesn't hear the right word and you'll say the wrong word. Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's faster than you typing it out, listening. That's, are you, you're using the app then? Yeah.
Yes. So it's fun.
That's good. So the, it's, it's, our calls are just a little over an hour. And so, you know, I, I would hope that you could be there. It's tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday at 4:30 is the first call. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah. And also, have you been able to get on the website?
I haven't done anything. I just finished, I just finished literally today. And now, literally, I finished like 20 minutes before your meeting.
Okay. Maybe you can, you can check out the website before you get on tomorrow night. And, because if you go on the website, I have the recording because our first call was actually last Thursday. It was just kind of an introduction call. I didn't really get into any teaching. It was more like an introduction to what we're going to be doing. I did a tour of the website, so you could access it. So if you could listen to that, you, you'll, you'll know what I said so that we'll get, be ready to get going. Okay? That would be great.
So, so that meeting too, I mean, that hour, is it one-on-one or is it you with other parents?
That is the group call. There's two group calls a month with the other parents. So, but then you are at the superhero level. So you get, you talk to me on a consult one-on-one, once a month.
Okay.
Yeah, and so you just have to schedule that whenever you want to schedule it. Because that's, that's, you, you joined at the superhero level, level two.
So there's different levels of membership?
Yes, there's different levels. Yes. Yes, so that level one is two group calls a month where you have access to me. You can ask any questions you want. And it's, it is, it's, you know, I don't have a whole lot of people in the class. So it's not like there's 100 people in the class, so you never get to talk to me. You, you have time to talk to me and, and, and get your needs met, whatever they are. You, you have time to talk to me and, um, and, and get your needs met, whatever they are. And then, and actually it's cool because a lot of parents have the same questions. So someone else might ask the same question you have or think of something you might not think of. So it's kind of cool to actually be in a small group with other parents because you learn from the other parents. And, um, and there's, I have, there's a website with membership where I have all the information on there. The scripts, the, um, the logs, the, uh, fill-in-the-blank emails and letters. And then I teach off of the curriculum in there as well as, uh, meet you twice a month online. Then the next level is you get a one-on-one consultation with me, just you and me. Where you can ask me any question you want. If you're stuck on a letter or if you're stuck on something, then I work you through your individual things. As you have that individual time with me.
Okay, wow, that's great, okay.
Does anybody else have any, any questions about what I talked about? Regarding, um, you know, getting your letter in. So you want to talk about that. You want to talk about your device and your wifi. You want to talk about, you want instruction for next school year, you know, one-on-one or not, but teaching, your teachers teaching classes online. You want to be able to have access to your teachers. You want parent training for, for how to use the technology. And you want them to have progress monitoring to make sure they're monitoring your child's goals. Because last time you guys, they didn't even work on goals. They didn't provide the IP. They, they didn't work on goals. They didn't provide accommodations. They didn't, uh, you know, lots of people had aids or ABA, behavioral aids. They weren't even there. Your services, speech, OT, ABA, whatever they were, if you didn't get them, they owe you that. That's compensatory education, guys. So if you don't ask for compensatory education, they're just not going to make it up. They're just gonna go, oh, you, um, Mrs. Smith, your child missed 20 sessions of speech and language. We're going to make that up for you. They're not going to do that, you guys. You have to know how to ask for it. And you have to know how to ask for it in the proper way. Because this is the, this is, you know, IDEA. This is the, and it's also the bureaucracy of the school district. So, you know, a lot of parents say, why don't they just do what they're supposed to do? Why do we always have to fight and learn all this stuff? Well, it's because the district is a bureaucratic institution. And bureaucratic institutions, their priority is power and control and their short-term profits. They want to save money. So if they don't have to spend money on your child, they're not going to. They're not gonna, IDEA says, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act says that they need to serve your child to the maximum extent appropriate under the federal law. But do they do that? Heck, no. They don't do that to the maximum extent appropriate. But the parents who know their rights and about these things that I'm teaching you, those are the kids that are going to be served to the maximum extent appropriate. And it's sad, but true. So, you know, they mislead parents, misguide parents, give you misinformation and will even lie to you if they know you don't know. So, and that goes back to what I always call, what I call, they size you up. Meaning that when you're in an IEP meeting and you're talking and they're talking, they're, they're evaluating you. They're looking as you're going, hmm, how much does this parent know about their parent rights? How much does this parent know about the IP process? The IP process is a process. And it's a process in which you develop the IEP, your child's services, placement and, and the goals and objectives. So if you don't know those, that process and how it works, they're going to take advantage of you. And they're not going to do it properly. And they're going to violate your parent rights right and left. And you're just going to sit there trusting them, thinking they're doing the right thing. But they're going to say, oh, obviously this parent does not know their parent rights. They are not educated on IDEA and they are not a parent advocate. So we can take as much advantage of this parent as we like. That's why when you look at different IEPs, you might have a kid with the same disability, with the same needs that has a completely different IEP than another child. And why is that? Because the parent knows how to advocate and the other parent doesn't. So that's why I'm offering this parent brigade. Because I have a child with autism and I went through it too. And the past 22 years, I've attended more than 3,000 IEP meetings, helping other moms to make sure that doesn't happen to their child. Because this is our broken special education system. And this is the way it works.
You know, I have a question, Valerie. The one thing that I was shocked by the last IEP, I went to help a parent. They were actually telling the parent that she needed to sign that day or she had 15 days. And if she didn't sign, that the IP was going to be locked.
I've heard it so many times and that is such a lie. That is a flat-out lie.
And the parent looked terrified and she was like, I don't want to sign. I told her, don't sign, you don't have to. I go, and I thought I said, are you threatening her? Are you threatening her that she has to sign?
Well, it's, 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 it's not correct information. When, what, parents, when you don't sign your IEP because you don't agree with your IEP, stay put goes into effect. Stay put is, means that the current IEP and offer of fate that the district has, has offered you, you don't agree with, so you don't sign it. But the last IEP that you did sign, that IEP remains in effect until you resolve the dispute on the current IEP. You don't lose anything. Whatever the last IEP says is what you get. Okay, so it's not true. You don't have to sign your IEP until you make sure that IEP is what you want it to be. And again, there's a process. So, you know, and I, again, I, this is what I teach in, in the parent brigade. When you don't agree, then you write a letter afterwards. It's called a partial agreement or a dissent. So if you don't agree with anything in it, then it's a letter of dissent. If you agree with some things and you go, I like that and that, I want that to go through, but this and this I absolutely disagree with. So you write what's called a partial agreement where you say, I, I agree with this, this and this, but I disagree with this, this and this. And so I'm, I'm saying move forward with those things I agree with, but these things I don't agree with. And I want to resolve this, these issues that I'm in disagreement with. You do not sign your IEP. You provide that letter instead. Because once you sign your IEP, you guys, even when it's online 1B, which says, I agree with my IEP except for blah, 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 blah. And they give you a little tiny line about this long that you can't even write anything on. But once you sign that, then, then the IEP is what's called, um, it's called, uh, oh, no, I can't think of the term. Attested. It's called something and attested. I can't remember the exact name. But what it means is, is that they, that the, the state, they, they have, um, adhered to the state requirements that they got your signature. So even though you said, I don't agree with these things, you signed it. So that means that you, that, that they got your signature. So they don't give a crap that you wrote, I, I don't agree with these two things on the little line that it says except for. You won't get a response and they'll never resolve those two things. Once you sign the IEP, that's all they need. They need a signature, parent signed. Bye-bye, parent. We'll see you next school year at the annual. And they'll never talk to you again until your next annual comes up. Okay, so you don't sign the actual document. You write your letter and your letter serves as your signature to move forward with what you agreed with and what you don't. Then they're going to come after you and they're one, going to want to resolve it because you didn't sign your document. That's the hugest secret ever. And it, when parents get that and learn how to write these partial agreements or dissent letters, that's what I do. That's what attorneys do. So there's ways that you get what you need, parents. But when parents don't know these things, that's why they just walk all over you. And you can say, you know, try to get what you want, but you never do. They don't listen to you. You can ask for something and you never hear from them again or it goes a whole year. You know, and parents say, I asked for speech and language a year ago and I still don't know anything. Well, it's because you didn't ask for it the right way. And there's ways to do all these things that you, you actually will get a response and get what you want. Does anybody have any questions?
The one thing, um, um, that we're concerned is that a court, we, and they made her sign something, but they did it online. And she's been asking for a copy of that online thing that, because it was the Zoom meeting. And no one has responded, so we don't know exactly what she said, that she was, or she told them. But it was also voice record. She did voice record the meeting. And she specifically told them that she was only going, she did not want to sign anything. And they were pushing in the meeting and put, I mean, the meeting was supposed to be an hour and a half. It was started at 1:30. They kept it all the way to four o'clock because just, they just kept on pushing her to sign. She still didn't sign. But at the end, the translator told her to sign over here, but it was just for attendance.
That's okay. No, the attendance is fine.
We just, we just need to make sure that it was that and not something else. And they haven't given us a copy of anything.
Yeah. So the attendance is, the, the page will say attendees, attendees, IP attendees. That's okay. You attended. That's not, that's not an authorization of approval or agreement that you agreed to the IP. That's on the next page. So as long as.
And then she, she also contacted them because she, since she did not sign for it, he's supposed to get ESY and no one has responded to her yet.
Okay, so did, did she, um, did, was that documented in the IEP, those discussions?
Well, they wanted, they, according to them, that, yeah, according to them, that he did not qualify for ESY and he didn't qualify for this and he didn't qualify for that. And all the parent concerns that she had, according to them, they don't see any of those behaviors, which is not even true. I mean, this is a kindergarten, the kid, he cannot sit down, doesn't speak. If he's semi non-verbal, but according to them, he's fine in a regular classroom with typical peers in a classroom of 35 kids or something like that.
Right. So the, the trick that they do is if it's not documented anywhere, then none of those things are going to get addressed. So it has to be clearly documented in the IEP. And this is another trick that they have. So parents might express their voice and, and their concerns very well during a meeting, but it's, it doesn't mean anything unless it was documented in the IEP.
They had, they haven't even sent her the team action note, which she's been asking.
And that's another thing, parents, you never sign anything until you get the entire IEP and you read what they wrote. And if they didn't write what you said during the meeting and didn't, and didn't clearly identify all of your concerns and requests, then you follow it up with your own letter. And that's what I help you learn how to do too. Because this is their trick. Everything has to be documented. Once things are documented, then they have a legal obligation to respond to those things. That, they don't write it because then they don't have to respond to it. So they might have a discussion about it and talk to you about it during the meeting or even give you an answer. But if it wasn't written in there, then it's as if it never happened.
Not only that, they fight, they fight you when you're trying to tell them exactly. I mean, you, you send them an agenda, you tell, you send them the parent's concerns ahead of time. They still fight you to put that information in there.
I know. But your parent, um, agenda is a legal document that you asked for those things at that meeting. It, it, that you, because you submitted it, you gave it to them and they should, and you can ask. What I always tell parents to do is write, right at the top, after your child's name and the date of the meeting, I am requesting this parent agenda be attached to this IEP.
Oh, see, we didn't do that.
Yeah, but you can still do it now.
Yeah.
And she did, so that's good that she did that. Then that means it's written down and it's documented. So you can follow up your, your letter in response to the IP with, according to my parent agenda, I requested this, I was concerned about that, but it wasn't written in the notes. It wasn't written anywhere in the IP. Therefore, I'm not signing my IEP until it's addressed. Or let's have another IP meeting and really go over my parent concerns and my agenda. And then I'll think about signing. Right? That's how you get.
Information, yeah. And these, these moms or moms, they don't speak English. So I try to help as much as I know, but I'm learning so much more with you. But I'm not an advocate, that's why there's a bunch of them coming your way.
Yeah. Yep. So yeah, that, that's why the brigade is such a good place for parents to learn these things. Because then I actually have it all written down and I can teach in more in-depth these things and go over very clearly step by step. So I teach you each step to take. Because it's not hard to do. It's just that parents don't know what to do. So it's.
It'd be awesome if you had like a bilingual brigade too, like a Spanish one.
I know. I should, I, I would have to find, have to find someone that maybe could translate for me or something like that. But that is a good idea. I should do that. Because I'm sure there's no advocates that are doing that, right? That, that speaks Spanish?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, that's a huge. It's a huge.
I can translate documents if you have any help with that, but that's about it.
Okay. So I see some new, um, some new names on, um, does anybody? And you guys, if you don't want to talk or go on camera, you can, you can write a question in the chat if you want to. Um, and I can answer your question there. If you want to do that. But, um, so, so what's happening in, in you guys' school district? Do you guys know if you're going to be opening in the fall or if you're going to be having distance learning?
Um, this is Tala speaking. So, uh, I'm in Central Valley. So I heard about you and, uh, wanted to join your town hall meeting and I invited Farah to join me. As you know, Central Valley is very, very under-resourced compared to Los Angeles County and Sacramento and the better, the more populated areas. So in my school district, they are, um, what you mentioned, uh, um, yeah, they didn't even have a session with me, do Zoom, uh, having these actual live sessions with a parent, no parent training, nothing. Now they went with my kid into its, uh, special ed for a summer, um, for summer school, but using, uh, 2018, 2019 IEP goals. And I was like, wait. I was like asking myself, why do you, this is 2019, 2020. Why are we going to the prior year, August 2018 goals? And they told me, oh, we have to because, uh, we don't have any data. I was like, no, no, it doesn't make sense because the school year is 2019, 2020. We should be focused on the current school year. Now, of course, like you mentioned, like for me, for many of these parents, you know, when they don't know and they, then they become fall victims to whatever the school tells them to do. I am, as like Farah, we want to be more empowered, know what's the truth, what we need to do to help our kids. So we do, we do believe that if we have the right support system in place and we fight for the right services for our kids to have, they will have good outcome. Like, I don't know, um, too much about your dog from what you shared. Your dog has autism. I don't know, is it severe? Is it, what's the level severity you might share?
She, um, when she was younger, she was more, uh, she was mild moderate, but she was closer to moderate when she was first diagnosed, when she was young. So she looked just like a typical little girl with autism. She, she was non-verbal. She would hold her ears and scream. She had sensory integration disorder. But I got her, uh, everything that she needed through many years. She's now 28 years old and she, she has full language. She has great social skills. She graduated high school with a diploma and she became a dog groomer. And she's a dog groomer. But when she was young, they told me she was never going to write. She was never going to talk. She was never going to read. And then I was going to have to put her in a group home. And none of those things happened because I made sure that I got her everything. And so she reached her potential, which was not what they told me. So you don't ever believe when they tell you what's going to happen to your child because they don't know. They can't read the future.
Yeah, they, uh, I, I, as I learned more about the school district, it's actually one of the better school districts, what, what they say. But, uh, being the school district, uh, there was just so many restrictions. They didn't allow the AB person to school, as you know. Some school, just, some school districts work with you to bring the AB person to work with the child. Because, uh, but this good district would not allow me to bring ABA. They say it's, um, it's not within our policy. They also, I want to come in, uh, announce and say, why, why are you in the school? You should not be here. You have to be supervised by our administrator for 30 minutes max per month. So even I want to bring somebody outside to kind of look at the school, the, the special education class, what they do, unannounced. They have to monitor me, have to monitor my, my guests. And I felt, um, I felt I couldn't really, uh, look at things in the most naturalistic setting because it's just so rehearsed, just for a parent to see, oh, such as, is, uh, it's doing their job when they're basically putting a show for me.
Oh, yeah. So let me, let me give you a little tip there. So, um, you can, um, what was I going to say? So they do, they do, they can say that you have to inform them 24 hours before. They do, in California, they do, and a lot of districts, they do require pre, prior notification that you're going to come in. But in terms of you only being there for 30 minutes once a month, there's no policy for that. So whenever they say, oh, that's our policy, then what you do is you say, can I, can you provide that for me in writing? Can you provide that policy, policy for me in writing because there is none? There, that's how they're, they're telling you to keep you away and just to, to tell you, you can't do it. But you really can't. You, they, there's no policy that says you can't come in once a week if you want to. If you give a 24-hour notice, you can say, I want to come in once a week to see my kid for a half hour.
No, is this something because I had to ask for policy? Because they were to say that this policy or it says, uh, only 30 minutes, uh, a month. They showed me a policy, but in other school districts, nothing like this.
They showed you the policy?
They showed me a policy. I was like, that's a.
Was it really a district policy? What was it?
It was a district policy, but I, I want to look into like in terms of, at the state level. Where, where does it say where parents are so restricted that we can't even visit our kids in the classroom?
No, there isn't any. There isn't any. So if that, that district made that a policy, they did it illegally because there isn't one legally that they can restrict you as a mom from going in to see your child more than 30 minutes a month. There's no policy. There's no law.
That's why I want to know, since I, I want to come here to be, uh, be an informed parent. And I'm, uh, I like Farah, I do believe that we, you know, we have the, the knowledge we need to help our kid. Because my kid is like your kid, except she's on a severe side. And I believe that I have the responsibility to put the right supports in place so that she could be a productive being in society. But the way the school is doing, they're intentionally failing our kids so that they come out as being. But the way the school is doing, they're intentionally failing our kids so that they come out as being one of the many unemployed and not be able to go, go college. Is it fair for them? Where is the conscience to help these kids become productive adults? We, I also said, where's the moral leadership, you know, at the school level? I don't think there is one.
There, no, there is, they're not, they're not ethical at all. They're unethical. And they're discriminatory and they segregate our kids in special ed classes. And they restrict their ability to be, to have the opportunity to learn alongside typical developing children, which is discriminatory, and that's what they do. But that's our, their right, that's, that's not our, our rights are that least restrictive environment, which is IDEA, means that your child has the right to be in general education. If you want your child to be in general education. Now, is that the best place for them to learn? I don't know. You have to decide that. But you have the civil and legal right to have your child in general ed. You don't have to put your child in some severely handicapped class, a self-contained class, or even a special ed class. Okay, now the only way they can keep your child out of a general ed class is if your child has severe behaviors where they're going to disrupt the learning of the other kids and interrupt the teacher's instructions in a big way, not just, you know, a little, little way, but in a big way. Then they can say, you know, we can't have your kid in general ed. So they have to, but, but now there's three different levels of special ed. Okay, so there's a high performing level, which looks just like general ed, only it's taught by a special ed teacher. And the next level is an SDC, special ed class, which, which goes much slower and has many more supports and services. And then there's a severely handicapped class, which is for kids that they're, they don't even get typical curriculum. They're with severely, other severely handicapped kids. It's in a self-contained classroom and they have no opportunity to be around typical developing kids. A lot of times they don't even let them go to lunch with typical development. And I, and that class, I think is immoral and they shouldn't even allow that class to, to be available. But they do, and it's everywhere. And a lot of times they place kids there that should never be placed there. So those, those classes should be for the profoundly impaired children, which there's not a whole lot of them. So, I mean profoundly, you know, so kids with autism, they can learn and, and they just, with the supports and services that, that they need to learn. But they don't want to pay for the supports and services they need to learn, which typically are ABA and a real ABA aid in school and speech and language. If lots of kids with this, on the spectrum have sensory integration disorder, they never meet the needs in terms of occupational therapy for their sensory integration disorder. If their, if their sensory system is not modulating properly and they can't, you know, they're, all these sensory stimulation is coming at them, they can't think, they can't learn, they can't organize their brain to take in information because they have sensory integration needs that are not being met. So there's so many things to consider, and that's why they have the puzzle pieces, because it's a puzzle to put together. And then when you got the puzzle, all the puzzle pieces in place, the child begins to learn and progress. But it's a battle to get the puzzle pieces together. But, so, so yeah, they, they, you know, many districts are like what you're describing, but you can, the law is the law. IDEA is the same all over the nation, and they have to provide it. It's just that parents need to learn how to hold them accountable, and that's what it is. But yeah, they, it sounds like they're wanting, and see again, it's because of the money. They probably have restricted funding. You're in a more rural area, and so there's probably not as many therapists around. So they're shorthanded, so they only give it to the parents that really know how to get it. That's the situation. Yeah, so you.
Yeah, you are correct. This is, the parents are, there are a few parents I know that are lawyers that are able to access high-quality resources, but the majority that don't have access to high-quality ABA, their kids do suffer. Some of us have to drive like an hour just to our nearest speech, language therapist, ABA vendor. We, you know, it's a rural community, so we have to drive a distance to get services. And the services, in terms of quality services, either to, in terms of quality, nothing is in Central Valley. If you want quality, either you go to LA, you go to Sacramento, or you go to Bay Area or San Jose. But there's nothing that is worth getting services in Central Valley.
Yes, well, now, this is the one positive about distance learning. It's opened up telehealth for us. So you can now, you know, this is going to be a typical thing, getting speech and language over the internet virtually. So now that opens up that, that problem for you of, instead of you having to drive, then say, I want speech and language from this quality agency. That, that's, you know, all the way over there, but we can do it through virtually. You can start asking for that now.
Definitely, kind of close a gap in terms of services since we have a, since we are not able to keep providers out here in Central Valley, they all go to big cities for better compensation. And in this case, you're in LA County, I believe you're in LA County, there's a lot of resources out there for parents. And for me, I would have to drive a distance, you know, closer to be Davis or San Jose to get the services I need.
Right, and that's just so unreasonable to have to do that. You're going to have to go at least once or twice a week, and how would you be able to drive that, that many times? And that's so crazy. So yeah, so telehealth would be a good resolve for that.
My little boy is in preschool, you know, we've been doing every day, actually drive him an hour for ABA, an hour one way and an hour home. Every single day, five days a week. But you know, for example, the virtual platform has been really unsuccessful for, for my particular son, because he does have ADHD as a comorbidity in addition to his autism, which is moderate. And so for him to, you know, he has a high element of escape avoidance, right? And attention to task, right? So all those things affect his ability to learn.
Yes.
His IEP meeting, I had his developmental behavioral pediatrician from Stanford. I had his BCBA, who was a credential professional, I had a speech therapist, I had all of his own, his own private, you know, specialist, and they presented their data, right? Because the school was saying, for example, they didn't want to give extended school year. Because there was an absence of data, right? And I said, oh, no, no, there's not an absence of data, there's an absence of school-generated data.
Right.
Absence of data, right?
Yes.
They denied him and said, sorry, based on the, the data, not having school-generated data on regression or recruitment, he doesn't qualify for ESY. So I asked him to give me a prior written notice.
Good.
And I, with that prior written notice, I, I did, I told him, hey, I want to come back to the conversation of ESY. And so 15 hours of our IEP, I came into the 15th hour and I said, listen, the law says, you know, California Ed Code 3043 says, you know, that even if you don't have that data, you cannot deny him solely based on the absence of data. And so they were like, well, well, anyways, they ended up giving him ESY.
Good for you.
It was a battle, right? So I think the school district really wants to talk about regression or recruitment, especially in California. And they, they want to tell us, you, you don't qualify. That's like this blatant dangerous statement that they make, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. They're, they're going to say it, but you know, I've read article after, okay, so I read the teachers and, you know, what they're saying, the administrators, the educators, what they're saying. And they all admit, they know that every kid in an IEP most likely regressed in a big time way. Because this, this went way further than what normal summer school period of time was. And in summer school, kids regress up to 50% regression during summertime. So how much do you think they regress when it's twice as long during that time? So they know it. So it's a flat-out lie when they say, oh, no, 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 they didn't regress, or we don't have the data because no one took it. So, so we're going to go back to the present level from the day the school closed. No, that's not allowed. She didn't waive IDEA, Nancy DeVos didn't waive IDEA, or Betsy, I always call her Nancy, Betsy DeVos waived IDEA. Yeah, and, and so, no, no, that, that's your problem. You guys didn't take it. And you didn't have your, your, you know, you figure it out, and you, you didn't have your teachers do that, you know, not my fault.
Our school is exceptionally rural. I'm in actually Tulare, which is like right in between Bakersfield and Fresno. And so we're extremely rural, and our district just really likes to use the dangerous statements that nobody qualifies for anything, and it's just horrible. It's horrible, it's so horrible. And that's why we just need people like you to kind of help. I'm a nurse and so is, so is that town, you know, we're both nurses. It's like you look into it and you just feel, on the medical side, I can advocate like for anything, right? But when it comes to the school system, you go.
It's just different.
It's almost like talking Japanese, right? You're going.
Oh, I know.
English, and I don't talk Japanese.
Yes, 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 I know, that's, that's, it's a whole new language, a whole new world of information. But because you're used to advocating though, in terms of the healthcare system, you'll be able to understand it better and pick it up quicker. Because, because you already have that foundational base of understanding, you know, the system, the system.
But we need people like you to, you know, attend our IEPs with us, just because, you know, like for me, I, I just, I don't want to have to play games and I'm not there to play games. Let's just either do it the right way or let's just don't do it at all, right? Like, that's just kind of where I'm at with it. I'm like, I'm just tired, tired of fighting with you guys, like, let's just go to due process, or let's have professionals here who actually know, it's talk, who they're talking about. They don't even hear from Stanford, you know, developmental behavioral pediatricians.
Unbelievable. And they're going to argue with them. I know.
Yeah, right. I know, like I brought the guy from the local whatever, you know, it's, but yeah.
Right.
I appreciate your help and I'm going to sign up your website and I'm so looking forward to, to gaining more skills. I need more skills. I don't think you can ever have enough in this, in this world of IEPs, you know?
Yes, absolutely. Well, I'm so glad to meet both of you.
Appreciate all of your help and guidance.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And yeah, I look forward to seeing you in the brigade and then, because it's just little tweaks that you have to make and really it's making sure things are documented properly, how you say things and how you make your requests. And it, just knowing what their tricks are. It's knowing what their delay tactics are and what their denial tactics are and what they do. Once you know their game, then we can win the game. But when parents don't understand what they're doing, and that's how they get away with it.
It's going to be an interesting conversation going forward, what this looks like. Like, for example, my son's had severe regression. When I say severe regression, severe. And so documented by all of his, you know, physicians, everything, like, and there's been no recruitment of all, of any skills. But, you know, for ESY, they offered him the virtual platform, and I said, well, let's look at the data. The data shows the virtual platform has not worked, right? He's experienced severe regression with the virtual platform. So let's consider, let's, an alternative model, the California Department of Education said, their guidance said, some students must receive in-person services, right?
Yep.
That was like the bullet number two.
Yep.
And they still refused. I said, well, then let's, let's try one more viable option. There's people in the community that are open that will provide the service in person. How about that? No, sorry, the only platform you're getting is virtual and that's it. I said, so you're, you're telling me that I just asked for a prior written notice on that. And then I said, so what you're saying in a roundabout way is, let my child fail, right? Let him continue to regress, regress. That is the district willing to, to admit that they're, you know, causing harm to my son?
Yes, good, good for you. So did you get a prior written notice on that?
Yep, I did.
And they're still sticking to no?
Still sticking to no. So now the conversation, because that's why I had to get to an attorney. I mean, literally, I tried exhausting every option.
Yeah, you did.
You know, I, I tried everything. And they just wouldn't, they moved from yes to no on ESY, but based on their platform, right? What they was, you know, like I said, I had all the professionals there to tell them, this has not worked, right? This platform, he has regressed. It, it has not been successful, and we're still seeing regression, right? We have not recruited any skills. And they still don't, and these are severe behavior issues, loss of communication, he's not intelligent. A lot of words are unintelligible, and they don't even care. They just don't care.
Yeah, no, they don't. And, and so it sounds to me like, because you, you are doing all the right things. So what they're doing is they're, they're thinking, okay, this mom knows some stuff. Okay, she, she's educated herself. She knows, she, she knows, you know, certain things. But they're testing you. They're testing you. They're, because this is what they do then. They say, okay. So, so they kind of threw you a bone. They said, okay, we're going to say yes on ESY.
Yeah.
We're still going to say no on this. So it's a test to see, how far are we, you going to go, mom? How, how are you going to, are you going to file for hearing? Or are you going to let us say no and take and be the compromise? And we said yes on this, but we said no on that. There, it's a test.
Yeah.
This is what they do. And so that's why, you know, it's probably good that you just said, fine, screw you, I'm going to file because I did my due diligence, I asked properly, and you're not playing ball, you know, honorably and with, you know, ethics. So I'm just going to file. Because once they see that you filed, then they're, they're not going to go to hearing. They're just going to go, okay, okay, you, you can have your ABA and home ABA. You can, that's what they're going to do.
They're sizing you up.
Yep.
They know we've been to due process. My poor little guy's only in preschool. I'm going, and we're in our second go-around due process. I'm going, God, this is insane.
Yep.
My first attorney was horrible. I'll just say it was a horrible disaster. So I went and looked for the attorney who done like Timothy O and Andrew F. Like, that's the attorneys I wanted to talk to, right? And so the Tiffany, I meant the Timothy O case was the Tiffany Law Group, and she was retiring. I'm like, ah, how dare you retire, right? And then the Andrew F case, the guy was out of Colorado, and he's like, you know, he's like, what I really think we should do is, is get a class action against California is what we should do. I said, I know.
Yes, I want to get a class action, so.
And he's the, he's the Andrew F guy. So his last name is Robinson, but he was the one who took the Andrew F case to the Supreme Court. And he said that we have a lot of, when it comes to autism and, and the access to behavior services, which is the, the, the primary effect, right, of autism, that they really don't not address that, those needs. So in an appropriate, meaningful, no way at all, right? They just kind of act like they don't exist. Or if we had that standard of support for all kids with autism, right? That there, it would, it would enable them to, to access the curriculum, when able them to participate. If we can't learn together, how do we live together, you know, kind of scenario? But yeah, he, we all need to get together for a class action. I'm like, oh, I'm sure I can gather folks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he told me, he said, it's not that I don't want to take your case, he just said, you're just so far away. I don't know good assessors, things like that in your area. He said, but if you, if you can't get nowhere, let me know and we'll work together.
Well, and ask him, maybe he has a referral that.
He did. He gave me a good, he gave me a referral to Daniel Shaw out of San Luis Obispo.
Daniel Shaw?
Uh huh. Yeah, Daniel Shaw, he is, he's out of San Luis. And he's taken a lot of cases to the Ninth Circuit, a lot of cases to the Ninth Circuit. So there's a lot of case law behind him. So that's who he referred me to. And so I thought, well, if it was coming from him, that was probably a good, you know, solid referral. So we'll see. We're filing this week.
Yeah, ABA is such a huge gap. And districts just don't want to provide it, or they, they have these faux, you know, fake ABA services where they say, oh, yes, we'll have an ABA supervisor oversee your case. First of all, they're not a behavioralist, they're not even a BCBA. They're just a teacher on assignment that was trained in some autism. You know, they went to a couple in services and then they call them an ABA provider. And then they don't even provide ABA, they just go in and they observe and they consult with a teacher, and then they call that ABA. It's just, it's insane. So then you, you're left having to then say, okay, well then, we have to pay for private. But then how many people actually have advocates or attorneys to get a private agency, which costs, you know, 50 to $65,000 a year, which, you know, which I always end up getting from my clients because they don't have ABA. So the kid has to have ABA. If they would only develop ABA services in every district, quality ABA services, they wouldn't have to fund private ABA services.
Yeah, they say ABA trained aid, right? Like this, that's.
And they're not even, yeah, I know.
That's a 40-hour training of what? There's no accountability.
I know.
So what, what is that? That's absolutely disastrous.
They're so just ineffective and a lot of times they make the child worse.
Oh, yeah, because then they make them prompt dependent versus independent.
Yes, it's a huge problem. But also what I, I really think that parents need to do is. But also what I, I, I really think that parents need to do is this distance learning thing is such a problem now. Such a problem. So now if we're gonna go back to school, okay, the, the, the problem is temporarily, you know, um addressed, which is okay. But, you know, cuz I just don't trust that, that they're not gonna close shoot schools down again. If, 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 if things, you know, happen as they say they're gonna happen. Because, I mean, it didn't work before. If they don't make a plan and, and, I mean, our kids got nothing. They did not get an education. And it's gonna happen again.
But you know what, um, but you know what, Valerie, though? The awesome thing about all of this, and now that we had him at home, we actually know what the kids actually do. And now we're the ones that collected all that data. I know in my particular case, I know I did. So now when they're telling me, oh, yeah, she's doing this, this and this, no, no, she actually regressed. Sorry, no, this is my data and this is my data. So I think in a way, at schools, we have no access cuz we're not there. Now being home, we can say, oh, really? She did that? Well, we couldn't duplicate that here. She actually regressed then.
Yes, and that was the other positive for uh the, the distance learning is that parents got a good idea of exactly where their child is at and so much more familiar with the I E P. Because then you actually had to, you know, really take it apart and look at the goals and say, why is this goal even on there? My kid's already doing that, they're doing it fine, you know, so you really get to know if your I E P is appropriate or not. That was a good, big positive. But um they're, they're gonna have to make sure that they come up with a good plan to training the teachers, training the parents, having teachers get on and really teaching classes and figuring it out for those kids who can't access the, the online learning, you know, they're gonna have to have A B A uh people come to the home then and sit with the child. And, you know, they're gonna have to figure it out. And then when it comes to compensatory education for the kids that lost all those skills and you didn't get services, you know, that's the battle too, going back in because they're not gonna wanna give all those compensatory services or make up for the last ac- lost academic instruction. So that's what we're looking at going back, even if schools do reopen. Are you by reopening?
Um us, we have no, no, um in Tulare County, we're not sure yet. So they did send out a survey today, asking the parents what their thoughts were on, on the school reopening. Um so I received that survey today, but um, you know, who knows? I mean, at this point, it's, it's the choice of the district, right? Cuz the California superintendent said, you guys can open. So now it's the district, but it's gonna be interesting to see the first case uh that comes out against this, right? How are the, how's the A L J gonna look at these uh, at these compensatory cases? Are they gonna, they're always so one-sided with the district, you know?
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah, all the I've been talking
It's scary, you know?
All the attorneys, cuz I wanna, I wanna file a, a group compliance complaint.
Yes, oh my God, that'd be amazing.
That's what I wanna do. And so I'm working with a, an attorney on that and that's exactly what he said. He said, you know, Valerie, we're just sitting here wondering, okay, how are the um judges gonna rule? Are they gonna rule in favor and feel sorry for the district cuz they was thrown on them overnight? And I, and it's like, or what are they gonna do? How are they gonna handle this? You know, how strict are they gonna be? And cuz, you know, the flexibility thing, you know, comes in, but it's like, really, okay, they should have had things going after three weeks. That, that should be the end of the flexibility.
That's the truth. It's been a pleasure talking to you. I'm gonna reach out to you and sign up for your thing.
Okay, Tara.
Eating my blue, my flow boy. But I appreciate the conversation, the back and forth. Thank you very, very much.
And you guys, just so you know, I have a little form now on my um uh town hall. So you can like even write me in questions that you want me to answer during the town hall. So that's a new thing I just added. So if you have questions, you can do that prior to. And uh so thank you, everyone, and um, you know, connect, connect with me on my Facebook page if you have questions or come next week and ask your questions. And I also have my uh Facebook Live Monday mornings at ten o'clock. So I'll see you guys next Wednesday and take care, you guys stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, lady.
Bye bye.
We got this.
Yeah, we got this, you guys.
Barbara.